All right, good evening and welcome. It is February 3rd. I call the meeting to order of the Easton Middle Public Schools School Committee. This is six o'clock. This meeting is being both audio and videotaped. I'd ask everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's make this quick. We've got the Iowa accomplices to catch up. Roll call to my left.
Bill Fonseca.
Rich Ficero.
Sarah Trulio.
Gregory Thompson.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Aunt Snella Rochelle.
Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Nancy Salati, Recording Secretary.
Okay, thank you all. We have some minutes for approval.
Approval, I want to make a motion to approve the regular session meeting minutes of January 21st, 2020.
Motion's are made.
Seconded.
And seconded for discussion. Hearing none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero.
We'll approve the January 21st, 2020 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion's are made.
Seconded.
And seconded, is that formalized? Is that subject to that? That's all done?
Uh, half of it, sorry.
Okay.
Second half will be done tomorrow.
Okay, cool. Uh, motions are made for the discussion. Hearing none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Committee on Subcommunications.
We have our E-leaf gala on Saturday.
Yeah, right. Sell out?
What?
Sell out?
Yeah.
Nice.
Wow.
We'll be ready.
Yes, great horse, should be a good time.
There'll be pictures on eleaf.org after.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sarah?
I forgot last time when we had our meeting to mention that the library hosted one of our second graders, Lena Callendruccio, and I was able to go. She actually wrote a book and was there reading it and many of the teachers, and the community room was packed. So she's a second grader over at Meadowbrook, and it's a wonderful, wonderful story that she wrote. Really tells about her life and what she's already overcome at such a young age, so it's a great book.
She's really impressive.
Yes.
We happened to be there as well.
We saw her.
We were in the back. We were at a construction meeting.
They had a school-wide assembly.
Oh, excellent.
And she read it to the school.
Finn, right?
Yes.
Yeah, My Lucky Finn.
My Lucky Finn, yep.
What an incredible young lady. Amazing.
It was a great night.
Thanks. Thank you, Rich.
Two updates to present. First, I went to the first annual Mazzarella Invitational Youth Wrestling Match. It was quite a dedication to him and also a bittersweet dedication to Carol Driscoll, who passed away tragically, one of the Matt Moms. If you remember, we had a request to have, was it, I put seven or eighth graders on the wrestling team or something?
Yeah, yeah.
And I can tell you that it's impressive watching this coach, Basile, right out of my own heart, suit, coat, and tie on in his coach, and the lights on, just the whole music. It's just really, he's really doing a wonderful job, this Michael Basile, so I want to just really compliment him. Secondly, I bumped into Ryan Quinn and took advantage, asked how the one-to-one was going, and he was surprisingly positive. No one anticipated problems, minimal damage, he said, minimal. And he said the biggest plus has been the student help desk, I guess our own students.
Our students.
He said they had most of the complaints and questions.
That's great.
Isn't that?
They're a new project.
They're really incredible.
So this whole one-to-one is kind of going as smooth as we kind of hoped it would go, wasn't it? You know, that's from Ryan, yeah.
Yeah, cool.
Bill, we managed to get the posting up for the LPBC Executive Director on Friday. It is currently posted on Job Spring, the MASs website, as well as the MASc website. And I did have one of the secretaries at MASc send it out to the MOAC, which is the Mass Organization of Educational Collaboratives, sent it out to their population. So we're going to get a wide range of postings, then we'll see what we get for candidates. The posting will be up for this for the entire month of February. I have developed a schedule to screen the interviews and have finalist interviews in the first week of May with an appointment on July 1st, beginning July 1st. So we've got it all together.
Good.
It's been a lot of work.
A lot of work.
It's tough with this board because it only meets once a month, so it's a lot of text message, a lot of phone calls, and a lot of scrambling, so, but we got it off.
Cool, thank you. And along those same lines, we have a posting going up tomorrow for the high school principal. We have a resignation in that position, and tomorrow, February 4th, should be up on school spring.
Yeah, on school spring, with the possibility of also being on Education Week on their website.
Okay, so stay tuned for that. And then next week, our next meeting, we'll talk about how the process will go forward for selecting a new principal. Also, a couple of us met with Mary McNally last week.
Yep.
Did a tour of the high school. Mary McNally, the now-permanent town manager, I think it went pretty well. And, you know, walked her through the school, had her take a gander at the conditions we're under and what we're talking about doing forward. Talked about some other townwide things as well, so that went well. It's beautiful to work with her. Okay, we will move right along then. An opportunity for visitors to adjust the committee tonight, seeing none. We have the FY '20 Second Quarter Budget Report as of January 29th, 2020.
That's right, so in your packet is a financial update for the FY '20 School Department Operating Budget as of January 29th, 2020. This report also includes grants and revolving accounts. On page four, all of the salary accounts are in the top half of the page. The majority of the salary accounts are in good standing. I would like to bring to your attention, about three-quarters of the way down, the custodial overtime account is currently in the negative. This is due to construction projects that have occurred in the district this year. We are looking into whether this overtime can possibly be charged back to the project budget, so we'll work on that. As a reminder, most of the salaries are encumbered at the beginning of the school year. However, you will see that some line items still have balances remaining, and those are due to our temporary at-will people or coaches, advisors, things like that. I will say that my salary projections for these accounts forecast that these remaining funds will be expended by year-end. So any questions on the salary portion of the budget?
Have we had custodial overtime reimbursed before in the recent past? I don't remember doing that.
So it's not reimbursed, mostly overtime has been due to the construction projects.
Right.
So we're looking to see if those hours can be charged back to the capital budget for that construction project.
Yeah, we're hoping so.
Then you have two elements you have to look at. One, just, you know, regular capital project rules, and then the second one would be the MSBA process, whether it can be charged back for that.
Oh, for the reimbursement on the MSBA portion.
Right.
Exactly, so we're investigating.
Is there availability in the total amount allocated versus the bid amount that could fit that?
Both bids came under the allotted budget.
Yep.
It's a question as to whether you can actually charge that back.
Okay.
So we're checking on that and hoping.
Okay, thank you. Keep us posted, please.
Absolutely. So on the bottom section of page four shows the expense side of the budget. You will notice that the two out-of-district tuition accounts are in the negative. There have been several unanticipated out-of-district tuition expenses that have occurred. During the second quarter, there have been five new out-of-district placements, two of which have been through DCF.
Three.
I'm so sorry, you're right, three have been through DCF. Furthermore, five existing out-of-district placements had program changes, increasing the tuition for each. The unanticipated expenses are a 24.8% increase over what was projected for out-of-district placements. This has been an extremely unique year that could not have been foreseen. To have five new placements along with five significant program changes, all in the same year, is quite overwhelming to a district's budget. As you can see, the remaining balance on the expense side is much lower than expected and will require consistent monitoring. We will work with the leadership team to resolve these budget challenges together. For the time being, purchasing will be limited to essential purchases only. Past history has shown that often funding is encumbered, is not entirely expended, and therefore may be available at a later date for transfer. Questions?
Just a couple points. One thing that we do is we try to come out of the summer with the buildings really well supplied.
Yeah.
We're checking in, we started last week with the leadership team, but now we're also looking at custodial supplies and so forth, and we'll encumber what's needed there. And then we can start looking at transfers and so forth that may be needed.
Okay.
I like, this is a superintendent's word, unique, but I think I do want to add that it's highly unusual that this doesn't happen to us more often.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I really think.
It's a better way to put it.
I know you're working in-house, both of you.
Yes.
But I think we may, as a school, may have to take a step and maybe realize some of this communication to town council, town manager, et cetera, because there's no way we can, I think, that's quite a bit of money here. We're talking three, what, $400,000?
$400,000, that's correct.
You know, and in the past, it's always been sensitive to the fact, when it comes to special education, we do have unanticipated costs.
Sure.
And I think, you know, maybe not right now, at this moment, but I think for who's maybe the chair, the superintendent, to maybe contact town council or town manager at some point.
Yeah, I certainly think it would make sense, especially as we prepare to have the full committee and town council meeting later in February, that I plan on touching base with the town manager and starting to talk about some of these things. And then certainly I can work out with you how, what outreach to town council president.
I think my biggest fear, to piggyback off what Rich said, is I don't want to walk in there on the 25th and throw this out with shock and awe.
Sure.
Because these numbers are, and I've been on this committee for 15 years, and I've never seen anything like this happen in this district. And it's unpreventable, that's the problem. We can't anticipate, to your point, Gordon, we can't anticipate something like this happening. To Rich's point, it's amazing that it hasn't happened before, but again, you can't anticipate something like this happening, and we're at the mercy of whatever these rulings are because you can't say no. And it's our job just to.
Right. Generally, certain sort of best practices for budgeting, you try to utilize your circuit breaker, you try to roll over a certain amount of, all of those, I think, those practices in the past have handled, you know, say, three, four situations like this each year, and we've been fine.
But to get this.
Right, when you bring five.
Ten, actually, right?
So it's a combination.
Correct.
It's five program changes.
It's a combination of the program changes and.
Right, program changes are not as expensive because they're, those are already out-of-district students.
Correct.
However, it is in the thousands of dollars. It's the five unanticipated out-of-district placements that really all of a sudden add up.
Yep, and I think it's, I think it'd be wise to let the town manager, town council, and town accountant know, or finance director, before we meet with the council
Sure.
that these things are going on, and there'll be further discussion later.
Ms. Blair, before you move us to the grants.
Sure.
I just want, I do want to compliment you on the specificity of the numbers here, and it is kind of shocking to see on February 3rd that we've got $34,000 to run a school system for the next six months.
Yeah.
So, hence why.
Thank you for the specificity, and same thing, thank you for the agenda, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are projections.
Yes.
Very conservative. Can I just say there are other items that, circuit breaker reimbursement, we could probably get, not probably, we could.
Extraordinary relief?
Yeah, extraordinary relief, thank you, for the circuit breaker. You know, that's a possibility. Last year, we received $51,000. It's not guaranteed, it just came out, and Dr. Welch is going to, you know, bring it forward. So those are expenses, obviously, that go way above a certain dollar threshold.
That was additional circuit breaker funding?
That's correct.
Based on the situation.
Extraordinary relief, so obviously, if we have even more expenditures, so it is possible, and that will change, as we always talk about, it's always, you know, this is a snapshot in time, and we do the best we can.
Prior to last spring, we had not qualified for extraordinary relief. Last spring was the first time, and then we received an additional $51,000.
Is it percentage above and beyond, is that how it works?
The threshold is approximately $41,000. Once you have spent $41,000 on programming.
Yeah.
You can start to claim eligible costs above the $41,000, up to 75% currently.
Okay.
They'll possibly reimburse up to 75% of those costs above $41,000.
Okay.
However, Dr. Welch, who certainly knows more about this than I do, I believe she said that once you've received the extraordinary, I think the threshold the following year is a little bit higher, so.
I'm sure it is.
Just to let you know.
I'm sure it is.
So that is not a part of this.
They don't make it easier.
No, no, they're not going to make it easier.
It's not a part of my numbers because I didn't think it would be wise to be putting that in there.
Well, no, if it's not guaranteed, I agree, it's not.
Exactly.
Don't even put it out there.
Pam, the only negative in year-to-date expended, out-of-state residential tuition, how do we get a negative in the year-to-date?
Oh, because that's a credit behind the journal entry from the circuit breaker account.
Oh, that came out of the circuit breaker?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Over to there.
That doesn't require a fund transfer.
No, not that circuit breaker.
But there's still a negative in that account?
So it's, it's really, yes, there's still a negative in that account.
The 46 number, yeah.
And be assured that circuit breaker has, will be all expended this year as well.
Will that cover that in the out-of-district tuition negative, too? Still out there?
You've lost me for a second.
Out-of-district tuition?
The 366.
Available balance?
The 360, so that's what we're, why we're closing out, like, looking at open POs and, you know.
Those are required by transfers.
That's correct, yes, that's absolutely correct. So I'm still identifying.
That's operating budget.
Yes.
Oh, it is.
Yes.
Yes, of course, right.
Yes.
Yep, okay.
So you take something like the encumbered contracted services, you'll start to review are all, all that's encumbered there.
Yes.
Still needed. If it's set in an IEP, obviously, then it's going to stay encumbered. If it's something that we can release and bring it back for possible transfer, we'll do that.
We unencumber things?
If something, example, sure, yeah, because we always talk about that, it's a snapshot in time. Someone plans on spending X amount, and then the purchase actually comes in a little less. And so at the end of year, things, you know, I start closing out the purchase orders that have open balances. Does that make sense? So.
Yes.
So we're trying to do that sooner than.
That's where you're going now.
Yes, exactly.
And it's early.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
We have a ways to go.
Uh-huh.
Yes, we do.
Okay, good luck, thanks.
Ms. Blair, do you have better news than me, man?
I do, so let's look at the grants on page five. So the grants and the revolving are on page five. Up at the top, the top half of the sheet are the grants, and as you can see, all of the, all of the accounts are in good standing. You know, I've given you a little blurb on each grant, I don't think anyone has questions on those. The balances all look good. A reminder that that IDEA that we just spoke about, you know, $790,000, and the bulk of that is in tuitions as well.
That's amazing.
It really is, yep. Any questions on any of the grants? Okay, then I'll go on, the bottom section has your revolving accounts. As always, we bring forward balances from one fiscal year into the other. So here you can see your receipts and your expenditures. I do just want to bring to your attention that the athletic revolving account has that very minimal negative balance, and that's just due to deposits from gate receipts and athletic fees not being deposited yet.
Okay.
Okay, and.
So why are we charging for JV sports? Why do we charge for JV sports? Do we know? Gate receipts, we got on gate receipts, I just wanted to ask that question. Do you know how we got to that point?
I think it's only in the basketball program because they see the JV and varsity game as one, and so they start selling tickets.
They don't.
We don't.
If you go on soccer game, it's six, there the JV's playing.
Charging it.
We did have a conversation.
There's other schools that don't do that.
Well, we did have a conversation with Mr. McGee, and he said that this is common practice around.
As a JV basketball parent, that's why.
I understand.
Sorry. I know I got the card, but I'm just, I hear it from people.
You get lumped in varsity.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Okay, going down the list, I also, you're going to see that on the circuit breaker, there's a deficit there, but I would like you to note that second quarter is not posted yet in munis. The second quarter ended December 30th, but it doesn't come in until like early January, and it just isn't in munis yet, so that will cover that. I would like to remind you that we do have a third quarter payment that will come in. We usually get that in, in early April. Again, that's all been accounted as part of the, what I'm talking about here, taking all that into consideration when I talk about these tuitions, that's correct.
The next two payments.
That's correct.
Same amount, right?
It is the same amount. The fourth payment, I just want to remind you all that it doesn't come in until, choose like July 2nd, July 3rd, so it technically goes into the next fiscal year, so I can't use it as part of my rollover. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
However, it will be there in July, but every fiscal year is kind of, you get the fourth payment from the prior year and then the three quarters.
It does, it's out.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, lastly, transportation revolving has a small negative balance there, and again, those are deposits that have not been posted yet into munis.
Is that, that covers all your cost? We're not, so we're still receiving payments for.
A few, there's, we only have right now like five.
In some cases, we have payment plans.
Yeah, right, that's what I mean, but have you accounted for those, the payment plan ones?
They're still coming in.
Yeah, I don't think I'm quite understanding.
So are you saying there are some that, that haven't paid for the whole thing yet?
Right.
Correct, yes.
And that's the $3,001 or $5,000?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But we're on track for projected cost for trade.
We are, because then what happens is, just very similar to athletics, some of those payments come in, and food service, the same thing, at the end of a fiscal year, people are starting to pay for the following year, so there's always a little bit of that, if that makes sense. So, my last thing is, I just would like to, it's imperative to remember that the balances provided are a snapshot in time and changing constantly. I will be monitoring this, as you can imagine, extremely closely. Thank you.
Do you need a motion approved?
Yeah, please.
Motion to approve the dire presentation by, this is our Assistant Superintendent Business on the Second Quarter Report, January 29th, 2020.
So I could, motion being seconded, is that a real motion, are we going with that?
I think I'll take out the word dire, I guess.
I mean, as much as it is concerning, I think it does still speak to the fact that Pam, you do a great job of monitoring.
The same.
Yeah, and really ensuring that we are in a much more situation.
Yep.
So salaries are being paid, kids are receiving the services that they need, so as much as we've had a huge shift to what has typically been a typical budget, we're still able to provide the types of services and experiences and instructional programming, and educators are going to continue to get paid, custodians are going to continue to get paid. So we could have been in a much more serious situation.
Buildings are going to keep it around.
Every, it's going to be life as usual in Easton, hell.
That's right.
We just have to watch our, our expenses going forward and that shit, but at least we're, we could be in a lot more stuff places, so.
Thank you all very much.
Do we have a motion?
We do.
Has been saving it?
Yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero as well. And this brings us into the next discussion on our 2021 budget.
So the discussion that just took place regarding the unanticipated increase in out-of-district tuition does have an effect as you carry it over and you start to look at level services for the next fiscal year. And so what we did last week is we started to go through those projections, and as you can see, as you go down the cover sheet here, the last year, when we were looking at level services, it was roughly 2.63% or just under $800,000. Given some of the current information that we have, we're now looking at level services that's going to be over a million dollars, and right now, over 4.2%. We're still scrutinizing, obviously, accounts and looking at all of this. That's right now your preliminary projection with the breakout of sort of how that occurs, contractual salary increases, you see, that's going to be up somewhere around 1.8%. The out-of-district tuition increase is, if you look at it against the entire budget, it's only a 2.2% increase, but if you look at it just in terms of the actual out-of-district tuition this year versus or compared with the projection for next year, it's probably going to go up over 11%. So that's really kind of driving that level services. The challenge with out-of-district transportation is that that also can change. It's difficult to project because should a student need a monitor? If that's not a situation where we can share with other districts and split the cost of that, that monitor is fully charged back to us during the time of transportation back and forth, which can somewhat quickly escalate transportation costs.
Is that subject to, or is, can we apply circuit breaker to that transportation cost as well?
That is new within the Student Opportunity Act, so we're learning more about that, how, when, and how we can start to recover or request reimbursement for out-of-district transportation.
So how much of these two numbers, the out-of-district tuition and the out-of-district transportation, can, would next year we receive?
Potentially be available, so.
Circuit breaker, additional circuit breaker funding.
Right, so what I can tell you is, it's brand new, and they're still figuring it out. We just got an email actually today that there's going to be a meeting in a few weeks about this. I think Desi is coming out and wants to meet with, with districts and talk about this.
Is that within our interest?
There's a significant amount of, I believe the figure that I, Gordon, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure I went and checked our special needs transportation, which was up at like $800,000 for special needs transportation. So I'm not exactly sure how that's going to go into the calculation, and it is not a part of, of anything that I brought. So that, too, could be a very helpful thing the prior year, and as we learn more, we can share that with you, but I just don't have specifics on that. It's supposed to become part of the, the whole calculation.
Circuit breaker is the following year?
That's.
It's based on the prior year?
That's correct, and we can legally roll over one whole year's worth of circuit breaker, if possible. And you've, I know it seems like a little crazy because you've got $800,000, and you think, why are you rolling it over? But for these types of situations that seem, you know, people don't always understand it.
But we're not going to do that for next year.
I don't, I'm not going to have circuit breaker to roll over on June 30th.
Leftover to roll over.
That's correct.
You empty the bank, and then you got to build a better.
In past years, we've averaged somewhere between, say, $150,000 to probably $300,000.
$300,000, sure.
Probably a top to roll over.
Yeah.
Last year, it, we used circuit breaker to about $10,000, so we only rolled over $10,000.
So based on this year's actual cost and next year's increase in circuit breaker, we're to assume we'll receive an increase based on.
I am to assume that, and I can tell you, I always put in a conservative number, of course. I believe last year I put in $700,000 we were going to get. We ended up getting $900,000 because it was, I put it at 68%, and we did end up funding it at 75%. This year, I'm putting, I put in the figure of $800,000, which is a little more than I typically would put in because I like to stay conservative for obvious reasons, because they don't have to fund it at 75.
If the calculation got us to 900 last year, and this year our costs are that much higher, aren't we to assume that we should receive more unless the percentage changed? Is that what it depends?
Exactly, and I don't like that word, so, because I figure.
Well, the reason why I say that.
You are accurate in that, yeah.
Yeah.
The reason I, go ahead.
They may, the governor and the legislature can change the percentage that they're going to reimburse.
Right.
So the last few years, it's been at 72, and it got to 75, which is actually the full amount that's in the regulation.
Right.
If they choose to notch down the percentage that they're going to reimburse, you know, then it's obviously going to start to.
That's their call.
Reduce your number.
When do we find out what the percentage of the circuit breaker?
When they finalize the budget for the year, for the state.
What month is that?
June.
Yeah. So, you know.
We have an idea as, as they're.
That's correct.
My point in asking the question is that four point two percent, we're in hot water. Because have we ever received four point two percent from the town? I don't think we ever got above three and.
We've never gotten above three.
So can we project an increase in circuit breaker to offset part of that so that it's not truly four point two? Because if we receive an increase in circuit breaker, then it'll offset some of those additional new costs.
We could collectively, as your, as the school committee, make that decision to make that, um.
But isn't that dangerous?
Well, it.
I mean, it's a calculated risk.
But let's do it based on the increases of this year. If this year is, is that much larger and it's, it's still a lower percentage, I have to imagine that we're going to increase, we'll get more than we did this year at nine hundred. So if you're using eight hundred, then where are you able to take, I mean, it's still.
Well, it's one of the things to.
If we, that four point two number is the end of the story in terms of our requests, I think, at this point, just in terms of past experience.
But here's.
And if we get that number that's really going to be lower because of the circuit breaker reimbursement, then we should, I think we should do that.
But the governor also has.
We can all decide.
Yes, right.
The governor also has the unilateral power to cut this percentage under nine C power, under nine C cuts. It could, it, we don't know where it's going, it could get cut further this year.
Yeah, but it's like, we got seventy-five percent last year. Even if it's sixty-eight percent, if our numbers are that much higher this year, the number should be more than last year.
Theoretically, yes.
Yeah.
But then again, they're talking about budget shortfalls already. And this is, this is, this is the politics of it. So we don't know. I agree to an extent.
That, that, that's the end of the story, as I said.
I agree with that.
Four two is done, we're not talking about anything else.
I think, I think I, I like the thinking, I think we have to go to calculate the risk next year.
Yeah, I think, I agree.
And listen, this is unanticipated. And if we have to go back to them in October, November and say, listen, we can't handle the budget.
Yeah.
These are anticipated costs, then, you know, then that's, I mean, I think.
Well, I don't want to say that either, though. I'd, I, 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 I think if we have a plan B, and I don't know how.
I don't, well, I don't know if there is a plan B.
But this, uh, I, I don't know either.
This year we're on plan C.
Yeah.
But I, I, you know, I have never seen anything like this. I have never seen, no, and, and it's, it don't, you know, there's nothing, all we can do is talk to people, talk to the town and let them know what happened, that we don't.
Yeah, no, it's fine, but other town, other departments have extenuating circumstances that have increased their budget.
I know that.
And so it is what it is.
It, that's right.
When we go in front of the council at four point two percent, then the rest of the discussion we're about to have is.
Well, I don't think.
I can't, I don't want to prejudge, but.
I don't think, I don't.
It really is.
I think we've got to, we have to hone in on level services with these numbers.
Yeah.
And what's below it, I don't think we can have a conversation at this point.
Would you like us to develop a couple scenarios or estimating circuit breaker at, um, the different amounts?
Yeah.
Yes, I think, I think we need to see that, what those numbers.
What's it been the last four years, Pam? It's been around the seventies, it's in the seventies the last four years.
Between seventy and seventy.
So would we forget a little less conservative?
Seventy-three.
What did you, what did you use? What, what is this number?
This is eight hundred thousand dollars.
What's the percentage? Do you know?
No, I think my brain is mushing.
Okay, no, 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 that's.
The truth, what percentage, oh, okay, I see, I see what you're saying.
What did you use, what did you use for?
The prior year I used seven hundred thousand.
But what percent, did you use a percentage?
I usually use sixty-eight percent.
Okay.
Like, that's what I'm more comfortable to do because it's for obvious reasons.
What would the danger, if we're talking about percentages, go to seventy-two? Go in the middle. It can go up to seventy-five, what does seventy-two look like?
Yeah, I think we'd have to develop the scenarios so that we can bring it back down.
Well, I, then develop, I think we. Well, we'll crystallize this for me, in other words, we're look, we're looking here, two point five percent in, in unanticipated special education cost, am I correct? So you're saying now that depending on the circuit breaker, we can in some way address that two point five percent? Is that what I'm hearing?
Part of it.
You're just part of it, yeah, part of it.
A small part of it.
Because you're, because.
It's not going to be half a percent, I don't think.
No, I don't think it's going to be half a percent, no.
But yes, you are correct. So as we find out more information about possible, you know, because I, I would think they're, they're going to have to, um, be able to share that information with all the districts.
We have to make sure is that Student Opportunity Act is allowing us to put in these potential reimbursements this year. I don't know that for a fact.
For next year's, for next year's.
For next year's calculation.
And I believe it is for, I do believe that that's accurate.
Well, because the Student Opportunity Act was just passed.
Correct, so.
But it's not going to be for this fiscal year.
Is that only transportation, though? Tuition is already circuit breaker.
Yeah, circuit break is already, yes.
So that's the big one.
It's just transportation.
It's just transportation.
So our big increase in tuition should generate a, a larger reimbursement on circuit breaker.
That is correct.
And if we receive nine hundred this year and our tuition is six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars more, then even at sixty-eight percent of that, we should get another four hundred thousand dollars.
That's a big number.
It is, I don't, I mean, I don't know.
I don't know if we get four hundred thousand.
I want to see.
I think it was seventy percent of six hundred and seventy-five.
Break out the scenarios, probably same with Dr. Welsh, who actually submits the circuit breaker for us and, and make sure that our thinking is synchronized.
So we say on February twenty-fifth, we go to town council, we're going to present this first page and then.
No, I don't think we've made a decision on that.
No, we, I don't think we have either.
How, um, how we can bring back scenarios to all of you on February twenty-fourth when we have our school committee.
And then we have to turn around twenty-four hours and make a presentation at town council.
Correct. I don't know if that's going to be enough time.
Really fast.
Well, can we have some of that stuff for agenda, the, the projections?
Yeah, we can work it out, sure.
And then at least we can look at it.
Funny, add a school community, I wouldn't mind that either.
Yeah, well.
Up ahead, if you have that.
I think we need to see it. I really, we've got to figure out how to have.
Well, all it's going to, all it's going to be is we're going to base it on, say, we base it on seventy percent of this year's actual numbers. That should give us next year's, uh, reimbursement for circuit breaker.
That's what works.
Approximate, you use sixty-eight. We're going to, if we jump it up, although I don't know that he did because if we got nine hundred.
Actually, it was, as I was sitting with the superintendent and getting all of this together is when we changed it from seven hundred to eight hundred thousand. So that's not.
But that's actually a decrease from this year. We received nine hundred this year, yes?
Yes, that's correct.
So because of our increased tuition costs this year, sizable, even with a drop of percentage from seventy-five percent reimbursement to, even if it's sixty-eight, I have to imagine with a six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar increase in our actual cost, that we'll receive more than nine hundred next year. I don't know, I'm sure.
I would agree with you.
It's logical, but I think if we do the math, we can do that, so.
And what we also can do is we can reach out to, um, Masbo, who's Jay Sullivan?
Jay Sullivan.
And, and see if that, if what we're projecting makes sense to him as well.
Okay.
Okay.
But I, if possible, I'd like to see that in advance of the next meeting.
Okay.
Just so I can, I mean, we've got to prepare, we've got to prepare to present something to the town council.
Remember, this, uh, the twenty-fifth is a preliminary meeting.
But it's.
It's not a full fledged.
I don't even think we should bring numbers then, I don't think we should, we, we.
Well, I think some of the discussions, what we talked about in terms of me, um, talking to the town manager.
Our costs this year, I think we addressed the costs this year.
Well, yeah.
But I think we still have time to bring forward a, an actual percentage.
But this, this, this is usually our one shot to talk.
But the budget hearing shouldn't be that. And I, I, I would be careful that we set precedent that we actually bring a budget to this meeting because it really is.
That's the purpose of it.
No, I think it's the purposes to outline the conditions for which to develop a budget. Right?
The charter said.
I have a size of a preliminary in this meeting, twenty-third.
Beginning of the budget process.
Right.
You, that meeting should kick off.
Yes.
Start a budget.
Every other discussion of the budget.
So they're behind where we are right now. So I'm saying we're not in any rush to bring this.
It's going to, it's out there now, it's going to be out there tomorrow.
But it's a work in progress because it's not going to be four two.
Right.
Well, let's, it's not going to be four two, but it's not going to be much less.
We're going to work on it.
I still think we need to strategize, though.
Yeah.
When you look at the requests that we're making above and beyond the four point two percent, all of those requests are meant to help possibly not have out of district placements.
But I don't, you know, given the his, given.
But that's on us to educate people.
Given the history of this town.
Then, then we need to think about.
But is it going to actually do that? Is it going to actually do that?
If we don't start to make a case for how education needs to be funded, then it's going to continue to be this.
When you put these things in place, you can't expect the return that you're going to keep students in year one.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Um, the idea is you build the program and you're keeping future students.
Which I think when you look at these budget requests, we're talking about requests that are going all the way down to preschool. So you are laying a foundation for students staying in district.
But.
You're talking about interventionists being placed at schools to help, again, keep students in. None of these requests are, are meant to do anything but to give the students across the district the services that they need so that they can remain in the buildings where their families want them to be.
But there's the whole, there's the whole other side of it. I agree with you.
Well, the reality of how the system works and the history of the percentage increases we received in the past and the availability of funds in general, the pu, the bucket is only so big.
It is only so big, but I think when we look historically that only being funded at two and a half percent for an increase each year, the cost of running schools has grown. I mean, that's, that's another piece of why you're seeing the governors work changing and shifting to try to help fund schools in a, in a more equitable, equitable way. But I don't think we can just leave off that additional one percent because by leaving that off, we're not doing right by kids.
I agree.
Well.
And we're not doing right by, by educators. So I think we have to keep that message going, whether or not they like it or not, or whether they agree with us or not. That's just my opinion.
You know, it's a valid opinion, but I think.
It is, the other part of it is, any additional FTEs are always moderately difficult.
They are.
And we have a couple FTEs that we're asking for, so that's the other side of the equation.
They're very concerned.
And so it doesn't behoove us to look at our FTEs and realign some of them.
But those FTEs are also critical to receiving interventions.
But they've always, you know what, they'll turn around and let's say you guys figure it out.
Can you, what about Medicaid numbers? Do we fight for that money again this year? That's about two on seventy last year, two seventy-one last year.
But it'll be more this year, it will be more this year.
Well, they changed some things with Medicaid.
There's, there's more reporting, it's, it's, there's more money coming, but it's a different reporting system, too.
Yeah, actually, it's causing, um, quite the controversy.
Yes, it is.
It's forcing practitioners to make a diagnosis in the reporting, um, which is not something that they're used to doing.
Yeah.
And so that's causing quite a controversy. So we have to, some districts have stopped reporting as much, we are not in that boat, but, um.
If you stop reporting, do you receive less reimbursement?
You don't receive any reimbursement.
And if you don't put a diagnosis, do you receive a lower reimbursement?
No, if, then you can't report.
You can't put it in, you can't put anything.
You have to.
They have changed the regulations.
So we're diagnosing faster than potentially we would necessarily? Oh, I don't want to say that.
No, you got to put it in.
No, it's just, it, our practitioners are now putting their license into the report, which was, had not been the case prior. And that's making people feel really uncomfortable.
Oh.
The federal government has tightened, has expanded the qualifications for Medicaid reimbursement, requiring more information.
Expanded the qualification.
Require, requirements.
Oh, requirements.
The requirements, not qualifications, requirements.
Just throwing it out there, maybe not a funding source.
Absolutely, so we will investigate that.
So we, we have to look at all funding sources, yeah, so we'll look at.
It was around two hundred thousand dollars that does go to the town's general fund, yes.
But the pot is only so big.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we know how it works.
The four point two number is a scary number to start with.
I'm with Sarah, I'm looking at five point two.
Okay, let's do it, let's talk, let's do it.
You know, we can put it in there, we can put it in there.
I mean, the worst thing that happens is they say no. We make a case for why we think it's what's right for kids, I mean.
No, Sarah, and I agree, we make a case, we always make a case.
Yes.
And we always do, make a case for the best education possible in Easton. And I think that's what some of this does. We just also need to have some sort of strategy.
A hundred percent agree, for if.
To pull this off.
Well, no, before that, before that.
Before that, we've got to make sure that we stay, you know, with the level services and then go from there.
So are we going to go through each individual request?
Well, the, the requests, um, have not changed incredibly, but there is additional information that you had asked for.
Okay.
Um, so the first one was, um, the request from Meadowbrook, uh, dealing with the preschool, the additional preschool teacher. And so there are three, um, categories that you had asked for some, um, further information such as advertising. So our advertising generally actually takes place, the majority of it, during the winter months right now. Um, and it not only is advertising, that's print advertising, but it's also up on, um, Twitter pages and Facebook pages for the, um, the school, as well as, um, they will send, um, Blackboard Connect messages home in addition to that.
So when do we allow families to lock in for students to come to?
They will be starting to actually sign up for preschool within the next few weeks.
So how do we do this if we don't know we have an additional preschool?
They'll, they'll.
Two additional.
They'll put people on waitlist.
Put them on waitlist. And, but we won't be able to let them know until the end of the budget process.
That's correct.
So we could potentially lose some on the waitlist.
Yeah, which is point number two.
Although I will say, I'm sorry, you know, I remember, uh, in a conversation I had with, uh, Principal Lisa Dakin, she said that, and Renee Mody, the assistant principal, that the waitlist, they still had people, um, interested mid-year. So we could, but it's all, it's a good district, it's a good preschool. I think we, we might, um, be able to get those students.
Just to fill, we get another twenty.
That's, that's correct, she was very optimistic, she was very optimistic.
After the budget process, potentially.
She was very optimistic that the, that the waitlist would, would grow, especially if, um, we have the potential of another pre.
So our waitlist, uh, over the years have been between seven and ten students. Um, the peer partners pay, uh, roughly eighteen hundred a year. Um, if they pay all upfront, they get the hundred dollar discount. Um, most families, however, elect to pay a hundred and eighty dollars a month, uh, for the ten months.
That's a nice piece of cheese for a, for a full-time preschool.
Sure is.
Wow.
Um, which brings you into point three. Um, on average, we, um, apply roughly thirty thousand to one of the preschool salaries. And, um, you might with additional two sections, just being conservative, be able to pick up another fifteen thousand to mitigate that, that cost, which I think I, I put back into the number, um, which is on the last page for this budget request. So it takes it down to fifty thousand, six hundred and eighty-six, in both places.
And then that next point that you make, on average, how many students is that?
Um, they were estimating anywhere from, say, two to five students each year. Uh, because once the students are with us, if there's, um, signs that they're not making progress, parents may request that they be tested. Yeah, so that, all of a sudden, you're losing that tuition.
Yes, yeah.
So they're reimbursing. Or if they're going month to month, they just stop paying because they'll be picked up on the early intervention.
I know it's in here, how many IEP students do we have there? Is it twenty-ish?
Um, no, no, we try to keep the class size fifteen or under.
Right, so ten peers, five.
That would be ideal.
Okay.
Generally, it's probably closer to as, as we get closer to spring, you see, you see the paragraph.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Um, then the, uh, reading specialist, uh, just at the top there, we did get some more information. Uh, so we have, um, actually two point five FTE reading specialist, three individuals, but they're two point five FTE. Um, they provide targeted reading intervention, both at tier two and tier three. Um, basically increasing the, the one FTE, another point five allows you to pick up more students, um, which, if you're going on sort of national averages, that's what, uh, Mrs. Dakin's talking about when she talks about eighty-eight to a hundred and eighteen students. That's based on the fifteen to twenty percent. Um, that's a national average, that's not necessarily what you're seeing each year at Meadowbrook. That might be a more challenging cost to take on. The preschool, I think your numbers are a little bit more solid. But anyway, that's.
But again, when you think about trying to provide services early on in a child's educational path, being able to provide early intervention around reading is critical. I mean, that's research-based, that's.
Critical to success in every discipline.
Everything. Um, so I think especially when you look at Meadowbrook and the work they've done around early numeracy and around early literacy, those two pieces are fundamental to the success of an entire district. Because if we're filling a gap for a child when they're in first grade, rather than waiting till they're in third or fourth grade, you're filling potentially a year and a half's worth of, of, uh, you know, gaps there as opposed to letting it grow exponentially and then looking at filling six years' worth of gaps, so, you know.
Yeah, no, it's a good point, that, I mean.
Putting the funding in for our youngest students does pay dividends going forward. So I think that's something that we need to think about when we're looking at ensuring that all the students who qualify for tier, as tier two and tier three students are getting what they need. Because if not, we're going to have more students in tier three, potentially, in grade three.
So the difference would be, um, you're getting that intervention by a reading specialist as opposed to getting that intervention by maybe a parent professional.
Right.
That's, that would be the difference.
Oh, so is there opportunity then if we add the, to that last point, Oh, so is there opportunity then if we add the, to that last point, we add the half, the point five, to free up, um, some time of a paraprofessional that would otherwise be doing that work?
You would free, um, you would free up that para possibly to go into and support an inclusion classroom or preschool. If you were actually to add a preschool teacher, you might need a para there as well, so then you could free up that schedule. We weren't looking necessarily to increase paraprofessionals, but certainly freeing up paras that maybe are, right now assigned to different duties. That would be great, um, to have at the preschool or in an inclusion classroom. Cause if they're condensing their inclusion classrooms now, similar to the preschool, you have a higher number of IEP students in that inclusion classroom. If they can free up an additional para, maybe instead of, say, two inclusion classrooms at a grade level, you move it to three inclusion classrooms at a grade level with para support. Sorry, get the pen close.
No, no, you're fine.
Okay.
Okay. I believe that was the additional information. So then, um, the, the rest of the, uh, requests are similar to what you saw last time, where you have, um, a shared at Mountain View and Maple Shade, math interventionist with the idea that, um, we do have reading specialists supporting, um, our students in the elementary grades. We don't necessarily have that same support with math. Um, and then Mountain View and Maple Shade, uh, as a, a second request, was looking at that social-emotional counseling, uh, staff member that would support, and it, it has come from, this idea has come from the social-emotional money and some of the things that they're starting to pilot, uh, that we've been able to provide to schools the last three years. Um, so their student mentors really has developed this whole idea of actually making that a staff member. And you had asked what it would look like if you went to a one point O FTE, and so I, I put that in there in terms of the breakdown. The challenge may be that one bullet point. Yes, the last three years, we've provided about thirteen thousand, um, social-emotional funds. Building next year's budget, we have not divided out that sixty thousand. We've kept it into special education.
Also, this thirteen isn't really gonna be there.
It was there two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Now it's not as much there.
Wow.
But as we revise scenarios, we can take a look at it. I would love to keep the sixty thousand there for the schools to use because it's actually supported students. It's created some incredibly, um, new and innovative ideas, and that's what we're supposed to be about. It's just a question of, we also have to cover, um, our bills and what's in IEPs. So going forward, right now, we don't have the sixty thousand out in, in the category of social-emotional funding. We put it back into special education.
So, yeah, we're offering less services than, well, to the, to the last year, this year, potentially. We don't have that thirteen thousand, or sixty thousand.
Yeah, not, I, I would say, um, so most, since, most of the social-emotional money is not something where they can utilize and hire a staff person for the entire year.
Right.
Most of it is starting second part of the year, when they've had a chance to identify which students might benefit the most from this type of position. Um, and so, um, three schools had advertised in the month of January. Uh, last week, unfortunately, we shut it down, put it on hold.
Which was very disappointing, as you can imagine.
Yeah, that's not good at all.
Yeah, that's, we feel the same way, and, yeah.
What happens when you get hit with.
Yeah.
And these are services that aren't in an IEP or five oh four, but they have been beneficial.
Yeah, sure, I bet.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't an easy conversation. Yeah, it was a really challenging discussion. And.
There's no way to remedy that this year?
Um, well, what we're doing is we're looking, as we go through encumbered accounts, um, purchase orders that, uh, maybe can be released and we haven't utilized, we're gonna start to give back money. It's not so much that we've taken money, we've just frozen it and sort of scrutinizing purchases. And I'd like to say, um, that they can start utilizing those funds again, you know, next week, but I don't think it's gonna be that quick of a resolution.
Where are those funds? Where are they, Pam? What lineup?
Social emotional funds, sixty thousand.
Yeah.
Is that a separate lineup?
We created a separate lineup.
Yeah, I, I created it for.
It's not in the quarterly then?
No.
No. But it's there, it's just frozen.
Yes, exactly.
Then there might be.
And what we do is we distribute it based on enrollment.
Out.
Correct.
So how much?
Yes.
So it's already been.
How much is, do you have any, any rough idea how much is left?
Uh, I think there was only about ten thousand gone, maybe fifteen thousand.
Oh, so it was like forty-five, forty-five, fifty left?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
Yeah, okay, you went to right, yeah.
The chunk of change.
I think, I'm going by.
The schools that actually hire the hourly mentors, they'll wait because they know they can't keep it, they can't sustain it over a full year, so they'll start the person after January.
Yeah.
So they look to run either January or February to June and provide those services.
Right. There are all things that gotta be known that have to be, you know, little things like this are the things that people need to realize. When this hit, this is what the result is, that we're cutting back.
Principals are very aware.
Well, no, I, I think other people need to know that this is, this is starting to have a trickle-down effect on everything now. That it's not, you know, we're doing everything we can to, to quote you, pay the bills. All right, but there are things that we.
The challenge there is that that was something that allowed us to be innovative and allowed us to, um, create new initiatives, but it's not tied to IEPs or five oh fours, so it's, it's what you have to go to first
Yeah.
as you're scrutinizing budgets.
And it makes, unfortunately, it makes sense, but there is, we are hurting a population because of what we've incurred. It's frustrating.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I mean, is it serious enough to go to, uh, some relief from the town?
Starting to.
I think if you were gonna go to relief from the town, you would have to go more for the IEPs and the out-of-district tuition than for something that's not.
But, yeah, but, but. That's really one thing, though. But I think if not for, it directly hits this issue, which we've been pushing for now for a couple of years, in terms of this has been a priority of the district and a priority of education as a whole, and so to, to now let it, let it go because of other increased costs.
And we're not, we're not letting it go.
No, I know, but I mean, to put it on freeze, to put it on hold.
Right.
It was insufficient, well, not insufficient, was, we could use more funding anyway.
It was a starting point.
Cause it should be a full-year program.
It was a starting point.
Right.
Uh, okay.
Let's give that some thought.
Well, no, we, I think, I think we, we're gonna have to make some decisions at our next meeting, I think.
And to that same point, so if we do, if we do go for relief from the town, then we have a new baseline for next year, potentially. I don't know how that would work, but.
Well, you could do one time, you know, just, and not have it go to the baseline, just, you know, of, a scenario of free cash transfer for relief wouldn't necessarily go to the baseline because you're, you're doing what has already happened, you're trying to relieve it, so it doesn't affect your budget.
Right, which is probably the objective of.
Well, I think it would be the object, objective, because you don't want this thing to go up any one percent, any other percentage points than it already is.
Right. I, I think we should give that some thought, I think.
Depending on what, well, depending on the scenario, depending on what scenarios are developed, because we have to think not only of this year, but next year as well.
Right, but if we're already freezing.
These are things, these are conversations that have to happen. You know, you can't, you know, you have to justify, if we choose to go this route, we have to justify and itemize exactly what's happened. Because I'm sure it's not just this account that's been hit.
No, we're exhausting, uh, circuit breaker.
But I mean, there's other things.
Which is typically carried.
There's other things that are going on. As well as exhausting circuit breaker, there are other programs that, to cover this.
Well, the other fund transfers that we potentially do would be.
That's what we're trying to develop now.
That's what I'm talking about.
Where we're gonna be transferring from.
All right, can we start to maybe talk about that next week? Maybe an agenda and then.
Yep.
Further discussion at next meeting. I think we're okay to not come with a full picture to town council.
I think.
We come forward with additional costs for this year.
Yeah.
We come forward with contractual increases for next year, and then.
Well, I think you have to talk about these costs, these extraordinary costs.
Yeah, but we still are gonna work on the percentages because if we can, uh, assume, I know you don't like that word. Circuit breaker, more, uh, closer to what it might actually be, then, then that number will at least change. I just think that number will scare people.
This number definitely will scare people. All right. We're all in the same page.
We are.
Okay, so as far as the budget, we're gonna come back to this, um, with information on the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Page for twenty-fifth, okay.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure isn't easy.
Moving on to new business, you have, uh, a request for the, um, from the science department. This would be for next school year, um, to go over the, uh, April break, um, to Costa Rica. This is a trip we haven't taken in a while, but, um, I believe three years ago may have been the last time that the science department brought students to, um, Costa Rica, uh, and then the itinerary is outlined as well as the cross-curricular standards on the pages that follow the letter from, um, Mr. Page.
Was there a reason that they stopped, or it just wasn't, there wasn't an interest in this?
I, I think, um, you had different staff at the time that had done the trips prior to this, um, and now you have, uh, Mrs., um.
Was Mrs. McGilvray running this trip herself?
Uh, it looks like, I think, uh, you have Ms. Rivera also.
Yeah, I see.
Going, she's one of our Spanish teachers. Um, and then you might be able to certainly, um, recruit other, another staff member.
Why don't Miss McGilvray email us?
Right, but this is only the first, this is the first time. They'll have to come back to us with more information.
Right. Um, I think Ms. Rainier was one of the, uh, organizers of the last trip that had gone to Costa Rica.
What, uh, what class are they in, these students?
They'd be in, um, probably bio and possibly.
Yeah, Ms. White's a Spanish teacher.
Yeah.
Ms. McGilvray, I think, is a biology teacher?
I don't believe she's bio, and, uh.
Next year.
Maybe also teaches one section of.
Usually don't get preliminary acceptance, then they come back.
Yeah, they have. This is preliminary, that's why I said.
May I make a motion to approve the high school science department trip to Costa Rica, April sixteenth, the twenty-fourth of two thousand twenty-one, with them coming back to us for a final decision.
A final recommendation. So this is a preliminary.
This allows them to start planning.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero.
Thank you. So this is, um, actually, uh, an added trip for the science team and the robotics team. Um, this would take them to the Rochester Institute of Technology, uh, on that first weekend of the February break, fifteenth and sixteenth. Uh, it's not a, a tournament that they've gone to before, but, um, I think it would certainly be a very worthwhile experience to be up at the Rochester, Rochester Institute of Technology, given the, uh, program that they have at that university.
That school break?
Uh, yep, the weekend break starts in.
The weekend. I move to approve the science, uh, science team trip to Ro, the Rochester Institute of Technology, the robotic tournament, February fifteenth and sixteenth of twenty twenty.
Motion has been made.
I will second.
Seconded. Only three to six students this time, huh?
Yeah, they're, they're only gonna take, I think, their top teams.
Motion has been made and is seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero as well. And our final order of business this evening.
Excuse me. Um, we have the calendar for next year, uh, school committee meetings. Uh, the one change that we've made actually reflects the changes that we usually make as we get into the summer months, but we figured we would at least project it for the discussion. Um, you have your July first reorganization meeting, and then, um, generally we'll put two August meetings, uh, with that first one usually getting canceled. So we look to, um, put the August meeting close to convocation so that at that point, we would have the business of opening up school, you would have a decent agenda. Knowing as to necessarily change their vacation plans, and we'd all be here.
This follows the same, uh, parallel that we did before, Monday nights, six o'clock.
Right.
Tuesdays, when there's a holiday, et cetera.
Yeah, so that Tuesday is, uh, the day after Labor Day, and then January nineteenth, the day after Martin Luther King holiday.
Okay, we will, uh, entertain a motion for that agenda item, please.
Uh, move to approve the school committee meeting date for twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Motion has been made.
I'll second.
And seconded. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. And then brings us to the conclusion of our meeting. Some good discussion tonight. You leave this weekend?
You leave this weekend.
See you Saturday.
Saturday night. Saturday night.
And, uh, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. We are adjourned seven oh five. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.